Good evening. I call the August 27, 2024 Regular Board Meeting of the Richland 2 Board of Trustees to order. The agenda for tonight's meeting has been published and made available publicly. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Trapp.
I move to approve the agenda for the August 27, 2024 Regular Board Meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Mrs., who's that? Mrs. Porter, to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Agostini.
Thank you. I just wanted to let you know that when we get down to the consent agenda, I'll ask that we separate the consent agenda.
Thank you. Board members, Mr. Trapp will check. The motion, please.
That is correct.
Board members, please vote. And Mrs. McFadden will do a hand vote. And Mrs. Nash. The motion passes. We will now move to item 3.1, Executive Session. May I have a motion to go into Executive Session?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Porter.
I move to convene an Executive Session for the purpose of discussing student admission requests into the district's adult education program, employment recommendations, and certified releases.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Mrs. Nash to go into Executive Session. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Here and on. Board members, please, well, check the motion, Mrs. Porter, to make sure it's correct.
It's correct.
Board members, please vote. Mrs. Nash, are you up? Okay. And Mrs. McFadden, you're voting by hand? Okay. Are you in favor?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Agostini.
With all due respect, when we do a hand vote, can we have them raise their hands in the board chair? Call all those in favor and all those opposed, please.
Thank you for your suggestion. I think the rest of us are able to vote on the computer. So, Mrs. McFadden, if you're in favor, please raise your hand. Have you guys taken your vote? Okay, we're waiting. The motion is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. The board will now enter into Executive Session.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Agostini.
I move that we adjourn Executive Session at 5:43 PM and resume public session.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Agostini and seconded by Mrs. Nash to end Executive Session at, what time? 5:43. And to resume public session. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. The motion passes. We will now resume public session. We will now move into the Inspirational Moment and Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Tamika Washington will present for this evening. Mrs. Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight's Inspirational Moment will be presented by Dr. Tia Jones. She is a 2022 National Outstanding Assistant Principal, an award that is presented by the National Association of Elementary School Principals. She began her career 24 years ago as an instructional assistant at Forest Lake Elementary School. She has taught at Rice Creek and Sandlapper and spent the last nine years as an assistant principal at Catawba Trails, and she has now stepped into her new role as the principal. Dr. Tia Jones, take it away.
Thank you, and good evening. Well, I'd like to say that thank you for the opportunity for allowing Catawba Trail to share this evening. Each year, it has been a tradition to select a special book that will serve as our theme for the school year. In education, opportunities for growth, innovation, and connection present themselves daily. But how often do we pause to consider what we will do with these chances? The new school year is a perfect time to reflect on the opportunities that lie ahead, both for ourselves as educators and for our students. There's a powerful message in the video that I'm sharing with you tonight. It's titled, "What Do You Do With A Chance?" This story beautifully illustrates the chances, no matter how small, have the potential to shape our lives and the lives of those around us. Catawba Trail presents "What Do You Do With A Chance?", narrated by our reading coach, Ms. Jennifer Nocella.
"What Do You Do With A Chance?", written by Kobe Yamada, illustrated by May Biesem. One day, I got a chance. It just seemed to show up. It acted like it knew me, as if it wanted something. I didn't know why it was here. What do you do with a chance, I wondered? It fluttered around me. It brushed up against me. It circled me, as if it wanted me to grab it. I started to reach for it, but I was unsure and pulled back. And so it flew away. I thought about it a lot. I wished I had taken my chance. I realized I had wanted it, but I still didn't know if I had the courage. When another chance came around, I wasn't so sure, but I decided to try. I went to reach for it, but I missed and fell. I was embarrassed. I felt foolish. It seemed like everyone was looking at me. I decided I never wanted to feel this way again. So after that, whenever a chance came along, I ignored it. And the more I ignored them, the less they came around. Until one day, I noticed that I hadn't seen a chance in quite a while. It was as if they had all disappeared. I started to worry, what if I don't get another chance? I know I acted like I didn't care, but the truth was, I did. I still wanted to take a chance, but I was afraid, and I wasn't sure if I would ever be brave enough. Then I thought, maybe I don't have to be brave all the time. Maybe I just need to be brave for a little while at the right time. I realized it was up to me. I promised myself that if I ever got another chance, I wasn't going to hold back. If I got another chance, I was going to be ready. Then, one seemingly ordinary day, I saw something shining far off in the distance. Is it possible, I hoped? Could this be my chance? I had to find out. I ran as hard and as fast as I could toward it. I don't know how to explain it, but the second I let go of my fears, I was full of excitement. It wasn't that I was no longer afraid, but now my excitement was bigger than my fear. As I got closer, I could see that this was a really huge chance. But this time, I was ready. As it came by, I reached out and grabbed it. I held on with all my might. It felt so good to soar, to fly, to be free. I now see that when I hold back, I miss out. And I don't want to miss out. There's just so much I want to see and do and discover. So what do you do with a chance? You take it, because it just might be the start of something incredible. So, what will you do with the chance this new school year brings? Be brave and grab those chances. You never know what new opportunities and adventures await you on the trail.
Welcome to Catawba Trail. I'm Stephen, and welcome to the special edition of News on the Trail. We're here to talk about something super exciting. Our theme this year, "What Do You Do With A Chance?" This year, we're all about taking chances, making the most of every opportunity. So, we're going around the school to ask one important question to our amazing teachers, staff, and fellow students. What are you going to do with this, your chance this year at Catawba Trail? I'm Claire reporting from the trail. Let's get started. Ms. McDowell, what are you going to do with your chance this year?
Well, this year, I would like to take a chance on learning how to roller skate. For our first week of school, students in art class were reading "What Do You Do With A Chance?" and learning how to make an origami butterfly, since that symbolizes taking chances in our book. And on one wing, we wrote what we want to take a chance on this year, and we also talked about how we can help other people take their chances. So when I told students I wanted to learn how to roller skate so I could skate with them at skate nights, they were giving me all these tips and tricks on how to learn how to roller skate and how not to be afraid of falling.
That's really cool. So, Karen, what are you going to do with your chances here?
Read a book.
Well, that's a great question, Claire. I'm going to look for opportunities to educate others on the importance of healthy habits, not just here at school, but in the community and at home, because healthy children learn better. And we also know that students need to be healthy to be educated, and educated to be healthy. And that's what we strive for each and every day here at Catawba Trail.
Stephen, what a great question. What I'm going to do with my chance this year, I am going to grab it, I'm going to use it, and I'm going to launch some incredible learning experiences for my young scholars. That's what I'm going to do with my chance this year.
Summer, what are you going to do with your chance this year?
I'm going to try to read 50 books this school year.
I think with my chance this year, I'd like to run a marathon.
That's really cool.
This year, I'm going to collaborate with my teacher's success team to help support our brand-new teachers, our international teachers, and our teachers that are new to Catawba Trail. We want to keep some of our old traditions, but we also want to build some new traditions, too.
Okay, Stephen, so my goal is to offer a lot of different music opportunities for the students at Catawba Trail. So I'm taking a chance in offering both chorus and modern band for 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade students.
When my students walk into the classroom, I believe that they should have the opportunity to take chances. So my goal as their teacher is to create a community where they will find themselves asking questions and sharing ideas in a safe and supportive environment. And when I'm successful at building that sense of community, then my students are going to be motivated to take those chances and challenge themselves in ways that they never could even imagine.
Well, this year, I took a big chance stepping out of the classroom for the first time in 26 years to become our school's reading coach. So I'm hoping with my chance this year that I help everybody learn to love reading, just like I love reading in a good way.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you so much, Mrs. Jones. Do we have any staff from Catawba Trail here with you? Let's recognize the staff members who came with you. We will now move into item 5.1, Special Recognition. This agenda item is in this session as a special recognition for School Board Association Boardmanship. And I will now turn it over to Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members and public, we are so excited to recognize our board members for their outstanding work. Board member and leadership team training is a priority for South Carolina School Boards Association. There are six levels in the South Carolina School Board Association's Boardmanship Institute. So we want to congratulate our board members for their work as they have moved up in these requirements. The first to be recognized is Ms. Angela Nash, and she is moving to level two. Congratulations, Ms. Nash. Next, we have Ms. Nikki Porter, level two. Additionally, we want to recognize Ms. Washington, who served as our School Board Secretary during the previous year. She was not here the night that we recognized the board members, former board leadership. So can we give her a round of applause? She did an excellent job.
Thank you, board members, and congratulations to all of the board members who have advanced their level. That's awesome. So glad to see you've taken part in student leadership and leadership for professional growth for school board members. That is awesome. We're going to move now to item 6.1. We will move to item 6.1. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the consent agenda?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Agostini.
I'm first going to ask that we separate the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
There needs to be no second when you're on the consent agenda.
You're just separating each piece of it?
Yeah, just to be voted on separately. Thank you.
May I have a motion for item 6.1? 6.2. Wait a second. Yes. Because we're going to do the minutes. One second, Mr. Trapp. Okay, just wanted to get some clarity on that. We're going to move to item 6.2, Approval of Minutes from the Previous Meeting. May I have a motion for item 6.2?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Nash.
I move to approve the minutes from the August 13, 2024 Regular Board Meeting.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Nash. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. The motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Mrs. Porter. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs.
Thank you. I would like to ask to have added to the agenda for the August 13 meeting, starting at Section 10 Agenda Item for next meeting. I would like to include Mr. Trapp's first motion, when he asked for a first reading of Policy J H C B, Release Time for Religious Instruction, and to include the board's entire discussion on the topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Any other comments from any other board members?
There needs to be no second.
Mrs. Agostini, one second, please.
I'm sorry.
Yes. Wait to be called on, please.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Agostini.
Yes, and I also want to state that when we go to the vote, first of all, FOIA does require if a board member asks for something to be included, it does not need to have a motion made, and it must go in the minutes if it's on record. But I will not be supporting the minutes this evening because I have concerns about how we've done the hand-voting process to approve the board agenda, especially at the last meeting, and the manner in which the change of vote took place. We can change a vote, but we do need to ask for those that are in favor and those that are opposed, and the public needs to be notified if there's a change of vote when there's a hand vote taken. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Any other discussion, board members? If not, I will call for the vote. Mrs. Agostini, would you approve the motion, please?
Mrs. Nash.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Nash.
Yes, that's correct. Sorry.
I better put these glasses back on. Okay, I'll call for the vote. The motion passes. We will now move over to item 6.3, Approval of Classified Employment Releases and End District Transfers. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Washington?
I move to approve the classified employment releases and end district transfers.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been properly moved by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? There's no discussion? Okay, the motion is there now, Mrs. Washington, if you can check that. Board members, please vote. The motion passes. We will now move into item 7.1, Public Participation. We have two individuals who have signed up to address the board. You will be given three minutes to address the board. To assist with timing, the lights on the table in front of me will change colors from green to yellow to red. When you have 30 seconds remaining, the light will turn yellow. When the time is up, the light will turn red, and you will hear a tone indicating your time to speak has expired. Before we begin, I will remind you that our meetings are live-streamed and recorded. According to Policy B E D H, comments from the public should not include gossip, defamatory words, or abusive and vulgar language. The policy also prohibits in public session any expression of personal complaints about the individual school personnel or any other person connected with the school system. Specific student or personnel issues shouldn't be handled through appropriate procedures as indicated in the district policy. Questions asked during public participation will be referred to a staff member for a response at a later time. We will start with our first speaker, and that would be Dr. Anna Parrish.
Last school year, I was chosen to be Pontiac Elementary's 24-25 Teacher of the Year, and this year, I made a commitment to the staff at Pontiac to be an advocate for the needs of our students and staff. First, I want to thank you for your ongoing receptivity to hear from us. Also, I've noticed an increased attentiveness from the district in regards to our school's needs, and for that, I'm deeply appreciative. Being proactive in response and anticipating needs is vital to our success. When I polled the staff a couple of weeks ago, an ongoing concern was overcrowding. At the beginning of 23-24, our enrollment as of August 8, 2023, was 760. As of Thursday, August 22, 2024, our enrollment was 889. There are some very real safety concerns in regards to our increasing student population. As I know you are aware, we were at 115% capacity mid-year last year when the Davis Report was published, and now we have over 100 additional students, which significantly increases that percentage. If the trajectory continues, we will have no additional space within the school for opening classrooms, which poses a fire hazard for occupancy. A comment from one of the teachers during the last fire drill was that they did not know if we would all be able to get out were there a real fire emergency due to the overcrowding. I return to the need for swift action in addressing attendance lines and zoning, knowing that there is a significant discrepancy among capacity in several elementary schools. In addition, there are issues of equity and resources available to students. Students in some schools have their own cubbies, while in locations that are overcrowded have, do not have these resources available at all. I recognize that these are complex issues, and at the beginning of the year, I expressed to the staff at Pontiac, "When no one speaks, silence is heard." I would like to encourage both the board and the district that transparency and communication goes a long way in bridging gaps of misunderstanding. Simply acknowledging needs and communicating plans and efforts, being transparent with the public, brings us together as a team. When the staff hears silence from the board or the district when there are very real issues, the assumption is that there is apathy and a lack of effort to remedy the situation. I loved the I loved the Marigold illustration that Dr. Moore gave us in the convocation, and as I read more about Marigolds, one fact is that they become sick and die if they are overcrowded and lack favorable conditions. In the same way, our teachers and students must have the best conditions in order to thrive. This includes ensuring adequate space and resources. In the event that our schools are overcrowded, swift action is needed to ensure the success of all. Let's all cultivate a healthy flowerbed in every school, including Pontiac. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Parrish and the Pontiac team. I'm a parent also, been there. So we'll start with the next speaker, Mrs. Edith Hines.
Good evening. It's an honor to be here tonight to talk with you. My name is Edith Hines. I am a speech language pathologist, and I've had the pleasure of working in Richland Two for the past eight years. Before joining the speech therapy team here at Richland Two, I worked at Palmetto Health Richland for thirteen years as a senior speech therapist at Palmetto Health Children's Hospital. I thoroughly enjoyed my time at the hospital and worked closely with my therapist colleagues in occupational and physical therapy. One of my favorite parts of the job was working on a multidisciplinary team to help children through collaboration. Over the past twenty-one years, I have been extremely fortunate to have worked with some of the most talented, compassionate, and gifted speech therapists, many of whom are here tonight with me. I'm currently acting as the feeding consultant for the district. I specialize in dysphagia or feeding and swallowing issues. When I was first approached about coming to work at Richland Two to create a feeding protocol for the district, it seemed like an impossible hurdle to overcome. First, I did not have a teaching certificate, and I was employed in a medical setting, and I had a South Carolina state licensure. Second, the pay in the school setting was not equitable with what I was receiving in the pediatric outpatient setting. The pay of speech pathologists in the school setting is not in line with other therapists such as OTs and PTs. This makes switching from any other setting to a school position hard for any SLP or speech language pathologist with experience. I believe this also limits the number of speech pathologists who are willing to enter the school setting. In fact, for the past eight years, my Richland Two contract has never actually reflected my job title, and I've always felt like my profession was being overlooked. I was ecstatic this May when my new contract actually named me as a speech language pathologist. It was a joyous moment to be recognized by my professional title on paper. I truly felt that this would mean that I would be paid accordingly on a therapist or professional level pay scale, and that my salary would be more competitive and commensurate with the other types of therapists in the district. You can imagine my disappointment when many of the other types of therapists that I worked closely alongside received their own named pay scale, and we speech therapists did not. It felt like our roles were not clearly being recognized by the district and caused a lot of disappointment. I know that this is a process, and I hope that positive changes will continue to occur. In closing, I would like to say thank you for recognizing us as speech language pathologists on our contracts this year. It was a tremendous step forward in acknowledging our roles here within the district and was very much appreciated. I would also like to request that you continue to consider us in the future as you delineate and redefine job descriptions and roles and responsibilities throughout the district. I hope that in the future, you will consider speech language pathologists as therapists who align and are similar to occupational and physical therapists. Thank you so much for your time and attention. I am looking forward to all of the positive changes still to come in Richland Two.
Thank you, Mrs. Hines and the speech path, language pathologies. Thank you. We will now move to item eight point zero, voting on executive session items. The board will now vote on items discussed in executive session. Eight point one, student admission request into the district adult education program. May I please have a motion regarding the student admission request into the district's adult education program?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Washington.
I move to approve the student, student admission request into the district's adult education program for students one through eleven.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mrs. Agostini. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Mrs. Washington, if you would please check the motion. Board members, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. Eight point two, employment recommendations and certified releases. May I please have a motion regarding employment recommendations and certified releases?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Nash.
I move to approve the employment recommendations and certified releases as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Nash, seconded by Mr. Trapp. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Mrs. Nash, if you would please check the motion.
That is correct.
Board members, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion passes. We will now move to nine point zero, new business, no ash, accident requested. Nine point one, fourth quarter pupil services report. The agenda item in this session is a fourth quarter pupil services report for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As Dr. Shalaya Burnett, the Director of Student Services, makes her way to the podium, just want to let the board members know and the public that while Ms., uh, Dr. Burnett will be presenting a very short presentation, there is additional documentation in, uh, board docs for the board to review. Also, we also answered some questions that we received from board members around Blythewood Academy and the number of students that are attending, so that will be presented today, too. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Burnett Lyles.
Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Moore, and, uh, community, thank you all so much for your time. I am here to present to you not only the fourth quarter report from last year, but also this includes end of year disaggregated data for you. So as usual, we, um, start with, um, four-year trends, and I want to make sure that, um, everyone understands that we are looking at the total number of infractions. Total number of infractions does not necessarily equal the total number of students. So we have level one infractions, that includes our minor offenses. Level two is mid-range, level three is our major, and then we have total incidents. Um, a couple of trends that I, I saw, um, that I felt could be pointed out. Uh, one is that there is an incre, a decrease in level one and level two, three infractions from twenty-three, twenty-four in comparison to twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three, but there is an increase in level two, um, offenses. One thing that may be of interest to you is second quarter from last year. If you all look at the numbers, there were some significant increases in incidents, and also there were some anomalies in fourth quarter where they were, there were some significant decreases in incidents. I'm not sure that I can give you an answer of why, but just to show that those were anomalies in behavioral incidents from this past school year. And if you look at the number of, um, students that have suspensions and expulsions, it typically correlates, um, you have in-school suspension numbers, out-of-school suspensions and expulsions. We do want to make sure that everyone understands that the expulsions that we're reporting are finalized expulsions, not recommendations for expulsions. And you will see here that in this past school year, we did have a decrease in the number of students who were actually expelled. Here, we always provide some trends on fighting. If you'll see twenty-three, twenty-four school year, um, again, if you look at that second quarter from last year, we see, um, a bit of an anomaly, um, with almost two hundred incidents, but then we also see, um, nearly half that in fourth quarter. So that was an unusually weird fourth quarter in Richland Two. Usually that is a very busy time, amen educators? Um, but this past fourth quarter, apparently according to our data, students were chill and ready for the summer, so that's a good thing. So, um, with our priorities for this year, particularly within the Office of Pupil Services, uh, some of our, um, discipline priorities, number one is administrator support. We do want to understand that my particular office, which is this Office of Pupil Services, uh, we support schools and students, um, and families on the discipline end. Of course, we also have learning support services, which is on the intervention end. We have my colleague here, Dr. Sean Suber, and we also have, um, Director of Federal Programs, uh, Cleve Smith is the chief, um, and then we have Audrey, um, Black, who is with, um, sorry, I said federal programs for you, MTSS, and Audrey is, um, federal programs. But for my area, administrator support, we are really prioritizing supporting administrators and understanding due process. We do want to make sure we understand that, um, a lot of administrators are very aware of what it, what due process means. You have to take a school law class in order to be licensed as a school administrator. You may not necessarily understand the nuts and bolts of what that actually looks like. So some of the questions that you all may have picked up on, well, why didn't this person have a statement or did we have a video? All of that simply comes down to needing to support administrators more. So we have had extensive trainings, um, with current administrators as well as new administrators, and there will be, there will continue to be, um, onboarding, uh, as new administrators come in. Um, so of course, we've had a lot of turnover with principals and new, and assistant principals, that's been quite a number of trainings. Um, in relation to House Bill eleven eighty-eight, which is in front of you, um, we also are aligning our practices. I am proud to say that, uh, with Dr. Moore's leadership, even before House Bill eleven eighty-eight came out, uh, we changed our practices for this year so that every parent prior to the hearing gets a packet of their, a, a copy of their expulsion packet so that they know the information before they show up. So again, that decision had already been made, but conveniently it's made because it aligns with House Bill eleven eighty-eight, which says that students have a right, parents have a right to access their investigative file. And also making sure that we support, um, administrators with the recommendation for expulsion process. There's a lot that goes into that. It's not something that you're taught. We support people along the way. Um, we also, again, providing investig, investigative files. We also have to honor FERPA, and that means that all packets are to be redacted and confidential information is to be removed, so that's a priority in providing training, uh, for, for our, um, administrators. Also, another priority is within coding. The coding of incidents, we call that incident management. Um, that is, um, quite a task at the secondary level, that includes our discipline secretaries primarily. At the elementary level, that includes primarily, uh, assistant principals. And so supporting schools on understanding how to identify a behavior, what, what is this a fight? Is this an assault? What is this? Um, and understanding how to use the matrix. Everything from that to including those, um, data points accurately in Power School is quite a task. Um, and finally, onboarding of new employees. So again, due process, coding, redactions. I just want to be transparent about that, uh, to understand that, uh, Dr. Suber and his, uh, team provides a lot of support when it comes to interventions, right? Hopefully, students will not misbehave. If you remember from my last, uh, presentation, a high percentage of our students don't misbehave and have zero, um, infractions. My office exists for when students do misbehave, to make sure that everyone is supported accordingly. Um, and so with that in mind, I will turn it over to Dr. Moore, you are.
Thank you, Dr. Burnett Lyles. Before I open it up for questions, we did receive questions from two board members around Blythewood Academy, Madam Chair. And so just to be clear with that data, we had approximately four hundred students that were placed at Blythewood Academy during the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. Approximately ten percent, so about forty students, failed to participate or complete their Blythewood Academy placement prior to withdrawing or being dropped due to non-attendance. Students don't attend the academy based on a variety of reasons that parents cite, so just wanted to give that answer to the board so everybody had the same information. And now we'll open it up for questions.
Board members, are there any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Washington.
Thank you. So I had an opportunity to look at the, um, level one infractions, which always seems to be the bulk of what we are seeing in, as far as discipline, um, particularly cutting class, refusal to obey. This has increased from the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four school year, and so I wanted to know, um, what are some things that we're looking at doing this year to be able to support schools, um, in those level one infractions?
Yes, ma'am. We're looking to have, um, quarterly meetings with our principals within the schools, just aggregating the data, um, diving deep into it, um, to set expectations, um, look at trends, and address those issues.
And I did have one more question. There's an infraction on there. Uh, well, first, let me back up. How often do we look at the, these lists of the different level ones? You know, is it year by year? Are we saying, okay? Because one of them on there that really stood out to me, and it's a failure to complete work. Small, very number of students, so we're disciplining, disciplining students for not completing assignments? Is that what that is? Or can you explain what that particular infraction means?
Yes, that is what it means, failure to complete work. Oftentimes, my experiences as a school administrator is, is typically alongside defiance, um, when there is an extreme refusal to participate in anything, which is different from, I just didn't turn in this paper or just didn't participate this time. So typically, the, the rare times that I know that I have used this in my, um, tenure as an administrator, it's really been more, I'm just not doing it.
Okay. And are we having discussions around what defiance looked like? Because what defiance looked like for you could totally be different for me. What disrespect looks like for you could totally be different, um, to the next person. So are we having that discussion so that it doesn't become, um, I'm writing you up and now you're out of class, and it's a consistent thing? But are we really looking at that and trying to figure out what is the best way that we can keep the kids in classes?
Mrs. Washington, I think that's a really good question. Um, I distinctly remember my first year, one of my first, um, professional developments, I was with, um, Dr. Grant, um, and she, um, was a part of our new administrator training, and she, um, did a lot of supports around defining, um, what disrespect and what defiance looks like, particularly for that reason. Um, and I want to say that was in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, Dr. Grant, is that right? She does so much, right? So yes, I distinctly remember that because again, it was one of my first trainings, and I remember the impact that it had on administrators. But perhaps three years later, and with the turnover that we've had in administrators, it, it may be time for us to, um, look at some additional support. Thank you.
Can I add to that also, Madam Chair? We did conscious discipline training this summer for all of our administrators, and the purpose of that is to have common language so that we aren't having those misunderstandings around what is disrespect? What is defiance? And so I'll ask Dr. Suber to just give a brief update on that to the board.
Yes, ma'am. So with conscious discipline this summer, we, we had, um, our event for our teachers, which we had about two hundred and twenty. Um, we're gonna train the rest of them in October, as well as in, uh, January and May, and it focuses on the executive state and remaining in the executive state. Um, but it also, um, speaks of if an event happens, do, do we react or respond? And so we're working on the response instead of the reaction with conscious discipline. Um, so it's based off connection with students, it's based off relationships with students, um, it's based off, um, remaining in your executive state. it's based off remaining in your executive state as a teacher when something happens, but also recognizing the state that children are in, be it the survival state or the emotional state.
Board members, any other questions? Mrs. Porter?
Yes, I just wanted to communicate on the information that was shared about the 10% of students not able to complete the work at Blythewood Academy. And it was stated that there are multiple reasons, and I'm really curious to know how much of that 10% was due to transportation. 10%, 40 students, that's a lot of students dropping out of school or not being in school. We don't know where, what the next option was. But I just would like to communicate that I would like to see a virtual option for our students in the future, especially for those who cannot provide transportation, just showing that we are doing our best in providing that education for all students, because 40 is alarming.
Board members, any other comments? Mrs. Agostini?
Madam Chair, thank you. Could you elaborate on how we're going to address House Bill 1188 and questioning all witnesses? The parents have the right to question all witnesses?
So it is addressed in our updated board policy regarding expulsions, and that is provided to all parents. So they are made aware of that House bill. So we're being transparent to parents. There is, also, we have to maintain FERPA. That didn't go away just because of House Bill 1188. And so what that means is that depending on the situation will depend on how we respond. But so far, it hasn't been an issue. Parents have been aware of what they, of what they are entitled to.
So in an upcoming policy, we're going to change it, to put it in policy?
It's already updated. Administrative rule, I'm sorry.
It's in our administrative rule, it's not in our policy.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm using the wrong language. Administrative rule, J K E?
J K E R.
Yes, administrative rule, J K E dash R. We did update our administrative rule to reflect that they have the right to question all witnesses. Any parent who has been, whose student has been recommended for expulsion receives that administrative rule. And then if, in the event that becomes an issue, then either my office or Cleve, Ms. Cleveland Smith, or Attorney Hawkins would support schools in understanding how to navigate House Bill 1188 versus federal laws with FERPA.
Okay, so we've removed from the administrative rule at the discretionary of the hearing officer?
Yes, I believe so.
I'm, I'm not sure what you're referring to. It used to be at the discretion of the hearing officer to question all witnesses, for parents to question witnesses. Matt check that and get back to you? Yes. Yeah, though, and I can look at, in the new administrative rule, I've got half of it here because, and it'll segue into my next question. I saw the checklist of the expulsion checklist that's been created. And one thing that we heard a number of times last year as board members, whether it was hearing it in an in-person appeal or reading it in a student appeal, was that the administrator did not reach out to the family to have a meeting with the child after the expulsion. And the administrative rule says, you know, if an administrator or his or her designee investigates a report of student misbehavior and decides to recommend expulsion, the administrator should suspend the student and notify the student's parent, legal guardian of his or her right to meet with the administrate, with administrator within three school days of the date of the suspension. So is that some, I didn't see that added to your list. Can that be added to your list to ensure that these administrators are reaching out to these parents and inviting them in as part of their due process?
Yes, ma'am. We can add that to the list in addition. Please know that we had extensive training with current administrators in April. That was a really important training, where multiple, all administrators were a part of that. We also had refresher training this summer, and that was a big part of the support that was provided to administrators to align with the state statute that requires a parent meeting. And what we did is also make sure that administrators understand that a parent phone call versus an in-person meeting, we want to make sure that we allow parents, if they wish to come in person. Even if you talk on the phone with the family for, you know, two hours, please still give them the opportunity to come in and meet in person. And that has been conveyed quite a bit.
Okay, I have a few more questions.
Wait, wait, Mrs. Agostini. Let me allow other board members an opportunity first, and if they don't have any questions, I'll come back to you. Are there any other board members with questions? Well, I do, don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I know Mrs. Porter indicated about maybe a virtual, and I think that's something that probably should be discussed with board, because administration can't make that decision. And as well as that, it's just my understanding that when students are there, I think parents want to make sure they're in a secure place, because they've already misbehaved. So I can't imagine parents really wanting them to be virtually at home while they're at work, because they've already misbehaved. I think they would probably want some type of supervision there. But I think that is a great idea, and it's something that probably we need to discuss as a board, rather than placing that back on administration. Mrs. Agostini?
Thank you, Dr. Scott. I had questions in regard to the incident information, the level, the discipline report. Are tobacco and vaping, are they considered in the same category?
Sometimes, yes. So when vapes are found, the question is what's in the vape? If THC is in the vape, then it's a Level 3 offense to reflect drugs. If it's tobacco, which typically would smell like pineapple or cherry, then it would be considered a tobacco product.
Okay, so that, I was trying to figure out where's vaping in that, but that explains it very well. And then I have a concern about, we're talking about incidents, and I sent the email in earlier today, so, and gang activity. So there were four gang activity incidents at our schools, and not four students involved.
Yes. So thank you for sending that ahead of time, because I am a nerd and I enjoy conversations like this. I was able to cross-check to be sure. And yes, within those four incidents, that did include 23 students.
Okay. So, but then I was looking through this, and I don't know all the numbers, but what concerned me was then looking at bomb threats from, and I'm sorry, everybody, that I'm bringing up sort of bad examples, but in 2022, 2023, it says there was only one. And I didn't realize that until later this afternoon. But my understanding was one high school had it three times, and another high school had one. So that's where I'm getting confused in reading these reports of whether it's the number of students or the number of incidents.
Yes, so based on state requirements, it is always, every single incident is to be reported. Now, if there are multiple offenders, they will be tied to that incident.
So...
Yes. I'm sorry.
I guess I'm going back to the bomb threat, then. There were three on three separate days at one school, and then another one on a separate day. So that's where my confusion lies in reading this report, is that, to me, it should be four bomb threat incidents.
I'm not, if I can be honest, I'm not as familiar with those particular incidents. To give you factual information, I'd have to look into that and, and provide that information to Dr. Moore to then provide to you. I will say that within incident management, it is something that we do have to support schools with. Sometimes, it is simply just understanding how to navigate data, and sometimes there are some supports that need to be provided to schools with accurate coding.
All right, well, and this would lead up to my final question. How is it reported? Is it school principals reporting it to you all? And then you all reporting it to, for example, the Department of Education? Are you all classifying? I'm going to say, for example, Spring Valley High School, when they had the bomb threats on three different days, it seems to me, in the Richland Northeast. Did the principal there just say, we've only had one bomb threat?
So the reporting measure is through Power School. That's our database. And so ultimately, when the information is then transmitted to the South Carolina Department of Education, U.S. Department of Education, the actual mechanism to communicate those incidents is always through Power School.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question? Some would.
Not really, but, thank you.
Okay.
Board members, are there any other questions? No more questions. Thank you, Mrs. Burnett Lyles and Dr. Suber. We will now move to item 10.0, agenda items for next meeting. Let's take a look at the draft agenda for September 10th, 2024 regular board meeting. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is September 10th, 2024. The board meeting will begin at 5:30 p.m. with a call to order. We will then move to the approval of the agenda, followed by releasing to the executive session. In executive session, we'll discuss public, we'll discuss student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, receipt of legal advice regarding Title IX regulations, employment recommendations, and certified releases. We will resume public session at 6:30 p.m. We will then move to the inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance, followed by the consent agenda, which would include the approval of the consent agenda, approval of the minutes from the previous meeting, and classified employment releases and in-district transfers. Next, we will have our public participation, followed by voting on executive session items, which would include student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, employment recommendations and certified releases, and as needed for items discussed in executive session. We will then move to new business, no action requested. We will look at, we will have our quarterly operations report, as well as the superintendent's back-to-school report. Next, we'll move to reviewing the draft agenda for the September 24, 2024 regular board meeting, and move to our if-needed items, which would include public participation, executive session, voting on executive session items, conclude with board and superintendent comments and adjournment.
Board members, are there any revisions or additions you would like to see made to the next agenda to, or to a future agenda?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. McFadden?
I make a motion to add policy B D, A R, B D R to this second reading for a vote. That's board organization, where we are adjusting the, the language for the role of the secretary.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. McFadden, seconded by Mrs. Agostini. Or is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have, I do have a question, actually. Do we have to have a vote on that? No. Okay, because it's an administrative rule.
We're doing the second.
The board votes on policy. So it's, we agreed on that, so it is as is. Is that correct?
We received feedback from one board member that Dr. Moore and I are scheduled to review Thursday when we meet, and then she can come back to the, to the board. So the possible, I'm sorry, the administrative rule was presented at the last board meeting. There was no, no changes recommended during that meeting, but we did receive an email from one board member with an additional suggestion. So Dr. Moore will share that with the board.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's new learning. Thank you so much for that. So, board members?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Washington?
So I see there are already two reports, so I'm going to go for the September 24th meeting. I'd like to make a motion to request a report on reading instruction for the district, particularly focusing on reading coaches, interventions, growth in reading, and any updates on new legislation regarding Read to Succeed.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Any discussion on that?
A report on reading instruction for the district regarding reading coaches, Read Reading instruction. So regarding reading coaches, Read to Succeed, interventionist, reading growth. I'm sorry, and reading growth.
Are we ready for the motion? Okay. Mrs. Washington, please review the motion when it's posted. Board members, please vote. The motion passes. We'll now move to item 15.0.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. McFadden?
I would like to make a motion to add something to the agenda.
We've already taken the vote to add something to the agenda, Mrs. McFadden. We've just taken the vote. So we're going to move on to item 15.0, board and superintendent comments.
Madam Chair, is it my understanding that we can have more than one thing added to an agenda?
Right, but I asked for that, and then I called for the vote, and you didn't add anything.
Oh, not for this one, for a different motion. I want to make a different motion for something different.
Right. I asked if there was any other discussion to add anything to the agenda, and no one said anything, so we moved on.
I think that we just did this one. So after this vote, I was going to speak after Ms. Washington, so that I can make...
So you want to make a motion to add something to the upcoming?
Yes, ma'am.
Or future agenda?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, go, go right ahead.
Okay. So backstory real quick, if I can. We approved a budget where we have several different positions that are open and that we wanted to implement in the district. And I just want an update on where we are with those positions. For instance, the athletic stop-ins, how are they issued FTEs to address inequity in schools? So if we can get a rundown of, just basically take the budget that we approved, and let's see where we are, and how much we've spent, and how many of those positions have been filled.
So state your motion, so Mrs. Washington will know exactly what you want. You explained it well, but state your motion.
Yes, ma'am. If we can get an update on the board-approved budget for the 2024-2025 year.
Madam Chair, just for clarity, what meeting are we looking at? And also, is this in lieu of our quarterly budget update?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to, yes, I would like it for a future meeting. Maybe the September 24th as well. If it's time constraint, then I can move it to October the 4th would be fine, but no later than October 4th.
If you just add a future meeting, then we can go back and look at what's on the agenda, and then we can place it accordingly.
Can we do October 4th?
Sure.
Okay.
October 4th.
Thank you. Ms. Washington, that would be October the 8th.
No, we were waiting until she got the most motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Mrs. McFadden, seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Washington?
So I was going to ask the same thing. I know that there are things that are going to be implemented this year and next year, like, for instance, our speech-language pathologist came before us even this evening talking about the steps and what's going to be next. And so can we make sure that information is included in the report so that we'll know what will be the next steps in terms of getting those positions, you know, to where we were talking about during the budget season? And then also with our classified, we, I have received many, 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 many emails and phone calls about that process and how confusing it was. And so if we as a board, if that can also be included in that update just to let us know, so that I, so that when we get an email, we can, you know, adequately respond, forward it on to the superintendent, but that we also have some background knowledge of what that process looked like. Because many people were confused in terms of how they were going to be paid and what those changes were. And all we did was approve the budget. We didn't have any knowledge of what took place behind the scenes. So if that can also be included in that update, thank you.
Board members, any other discussion? If not, I'm going to add something. I'm going to say this to the public as well as colleagues. We know every year we have a budget meeting. And we know every year, and I'll speak for myself, I've been on 12 years. And we know, and I know for 12 years, every year what time we have the budget. With these concerns, they are valid concerns. But is it something that we need to take on right now? We just ended a budget season. And I sympathize with all teachers at all levels, all positions, because I've been there. And I know we are not paid what we should be paid. And I think that is the goal to do that. But I also think it's a disservice to what we need to also be doing as board members, and that's student academic achievement. I want teachers to get paid. I want speech-language pathologists to get paid. I want our instructional assistants to get paid. I want the receptionists, the bus drivers, the cafeteria workers. But can we start doing the business of student academic achievement? Because the year has started. This year has started. Let's focus on student academic achievement. Because we've had this time to have discussions about these positions, and it was quiet. Quiet from many of the people who have now sent emails. Some have been vocal, majority quiet, and even quiet from some board members. Now we want to wait until the beginning of the school year when we have the test scores in front of us that's saying student reading academic achievement is low, below what we had last year and the year before. The math scores are even lower. And we're worrying about, and I don't want anyone to take this the wrong way, but we're worrying about looking at the budget right now instead of doing the business of trying to increase student academic achievement and then going back when it's closer to budget season and inviting those people. Because I encourage people. I encourage teachers. I have encouraged the speech-language pathologists to get in here the first of the year and put pressure on us. And that's including me, when I say put pressure on us, to look at the budget and see how we can change it. But by golly, the budget is already fixed for this year. It's nothing we can do. So let's start working on the business that we can do right now, and let's move forward. That's all I have to say. Any other comments?
Madam Chair?
I don't want you to be confused with the reason that I requested it. We approved the budget in June, so we don't have an update. And this is for the 2024-2025 school year. So we are currently in this school year. And so there are positions that we have paid for in our budget that I want to make sure to see where we are if those positions got filled between June, when we approved the budget, and now, and when school has started. So there is maybe a gap in which of those positions have we not filled. I don't want to go back and discuss how, you know, the money toward it. I just want to know, well, we asked for two teachers for our two e-school. Right now, at this point, do we have those two teachers? If not, what are we doing to make sure that we are recruiting them for maybe starting in January, if possible? Because we still need those. And if not, that money that is allocated for that, that's already paid, we can double up and next year say, hey, we can get four possibly. So we can start now looking at that so that we don't get to April and we're scrambling around trying to figure out what we don't have, what we do have. But we can start now at every interval and seeing where are we? How many do we need? We still need speech pathologists? Well, let's not wait till April gets here to say that we still need speech pathologists. Let's start saying, okay, we need how many? Where can we get those from? How much is it going to cost us? So that we don't wait until the crunch every single year. So I'm not trying to go back and redo the budget. I just want to make sure that we're keeping up and we're seeing what we have and what we need and where we are progressively until we get there to the statement again.
Thank you, Ms. McFadden, but my comment wasn't to you. I was just making a comment that we need to continue to move forward. And I think what you're saying is something completely different than what I'm saying. Basically, you're asking for an update of where we are and how we're moving forward. I can completely understand that, because we do need to know that. But I was talking about something completely different. But thank you for clarifying that. Mrs. Porter?
Yes, Madam Chair. I wanted to request that that information be sent in a board brief or something like that as it's updated. Because from what I've seen, some of the positions that we discussed and approved were just posted last week. So it may not be enough time for us to get enough data to really look at it. So as we get updates, if we're sent via email, then we won't have to spend a lot of time with getting little information at a time and having to pull it up again.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Washington?
And I will say for my comments, I'm fine with that being done in a board brief. But I do feel like the board needs to be updated, because there are times that we are often bombarded with questions that we don't have background knowledge on. And we want to be able to adequately reassure our staff that we want them here, that we hear their voices. And so I'm fine with that information being, being shared in a board brief, but also making sure that when we think about our quarterly reports, that we're asking the board if there are any questions or anything that they also want to see in those reports, because we do need to get those updates. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Any other comments? If not, we're going to move to item 15.0, Board and Superintendent Comments. We will now move to item 15.1, Board and Superintendent Comments. We'll start with Mrs. Agostini. Oh, yes. This is so long, I'm ready to move on. I do apologize. We need to look at the motion. I do apologize for that. Mrs. McFadden, if you would look at that motion and let us know if it's correct?
It is correct.
Okay, thank you so much. Board members, please vote. Are we still waiting? Would you like to do a hand vote so we can move on? Okay, she'll just do a hand vote.
It's a no.
The motion is six yes, one no. The motion passes. We'll move on to item 15.0, Board and Superintendent's Comments. We will start with Mrs. Agostini.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. I want to start by thanking Dr. Tia Jones in sharing with us, what do you do with a chance? And then also, thank you so much to our public participation speakers today, Mrs. Hines and her speech-pathologist colleagues. Thank you for coming out and for your continuous advocacy. And I love the support that you give across the district. And then also, thank you to Dr. Parrish for advocating for your school at Pontiac Elementary. But I want to tell your colleagues how fabulous Dr. Parrish has been as a representative of your Teacher of the Year. She is here faithfully at all of our board meetings from start to finish. So well done on selecting her as your Teacher of the Year. Have a great night.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Mrs. McFadden?
I just want to say thank you all for coming out tonight. Y'all have a good evening. Enjoy the time with your families that you have left, because I think we're getting out of here pretty early tonight.
Mrs. Washington?
I just want to say, it's the start of the school year. I was reminded of some dynamic individuals from Richland, too, who impacted my life, and I just want to give them a shout out. I want to give a shout out to my social studies teacher, Ms. Branham. She made me feel like one of the best students in her class at Summit Parkway Middle School. I want to give a shout out to Ms. Lottie Chisholm, who was firm and fair. I bought $60 to school, and she took her paddle out on her desk and called my mom. That was when paddling was allowed in school. I want to give a shout out to Ms. Shaw. But she's now Ms. Jeffers from Richland Northeast. She made me, she made me become the English teacher that I was. And I also like to give a shout out to my teacher in trigonometry from Richland Northeast, Ms. Ayers. I remember the car she drove, the perfume she wore, because she gave me grace. My brother passed away when I was in high school. And she, I came back to school, and she said, "Take your time with your work." And so I want to encourage us as educators to give our students grace, because you never know who you're talking to and what's happening in their lives. And I want to encourage our leaders to give our teachers some grace. With that being said, y'all have a fabulous rest of your week, and we will see you again in three weeks.
Mrs. Nash?
All right, well, we're off to a racing good start for the year. First, I want to say to all the Teacher of the Year finalists, congratulations. I see, hello Fred. There's one of them back there right now. We go to Grace Life together. And so I was going to shout her out. I'm glad she's here. It's good to see you, and way to go. Also, I kind of surprised and showed up on Joe Wilson's bus tour. Nobody knew I was coming. But we'll just say I came for the cinnamon rolls that the culinary students did. They were absolutely amazing, and everybody hasn't stopped talking about them. So kudos for that. It was an amazing tour, and everybody had a lot of fun. I think we had most of the fun twisted in the disc. But thank you to everyone who came out, as always. We appreciate you all. It's been a journey, and I feel like we are getting better. And so to my colleagues, we just came from our board retreat, and one of the things they talked about is us being impactful, the speakers, and being impactful to our students. And, you know, that's what we're going to be working on. And so I'm just really excited for a new school year. And I think I hit it all. So thank you, guys. Have a great night.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash. Mr. Trapp?
Yes, I would like to personally thank those that came out tonight, spoke to us in public participation, and all those that supported them. I want you to know that we appreciate the things you do, and, and we want, want you to share your concerns with us. I think that's very important. The only thing I'd like to share, I had, it came to my attention that one of our school libraries, elementary school, the books in the library was sitting in boxes on the shelves the first week of school. And I managed to make it out there last week and had the opportunity to go in there and move boxes around for two hours. And I've got to tell you, I was tired. And I thought, I thought more myself than I should, but I was very tired and it was, went to bed early. But I had a chance yesterday to go out and help unbox some of those books. Books is books. It's ironic, I've repeated alphabet about 100 times. But anyway, I got to put them on the shelf and alphabetize them. And I'll have to tell you, I said my alphabet more in one hour than I have in 30 years. And it made my head hurt, because I would have to do almost the whole thing over every time, even though I was at M. But, but I really hope that that library will be available for the students here maybe by the end of the week. It's, I think it's so important that students have the opportunity to read. I'm going to confess something here. And I don't know how I did it, but I'm, to the best of my knowledge, I didn't read a single book my entire 12 years of school, okay? I don't know how I did that, but I'm almost certain I did. And that is, that's one of those things that I regret. And I encourage the students, no matter what, what it is, you need to read. It will make you look more intelligent than you might be, but you'll still, you'll be very glad that you're able to read. And with that, I'd just like to thank everybody here for staying the night. And, you know, just look forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks. Thanks.
Mrs. Porter?
Thank you. I wanted to give a shout out to the Decker Collective. So last week during the football game between RNE and Spring Valley, there were 100 students that, and their families, given free tickets to that first game. That's Jackson Creek Elementary, Forest Lake Elementary, Conder Elementary, and Dent Middle School, who enjoyed those tickets. So I thought that was an awesome project for them. And if you don't know much about the Decker Collective, there's a group of people who meet together to bridge the community within that area. And they have lots of different projects if you were looking for volunteer opportunities. And I'm always amazed with what they're doing, because it's constant. Their next meeting is September 10th at 4:30 in Servin Connect Building. If you want to poke your head, and then once you go to one, you get updates on all the things that they're doing. So it's pretty awesome what they do for our students in Richland, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Porter. Dr. Moore?
Well, we had a lot of great things happen since the last board meeting. Want to start off with a nice video. You might see someone in the audience in it. Students, guess what? Your teacher, Ms. Cummings, is one of five finalists for District Teacher of the Year. Congratulations. I'm so excited for you.
I was shocked. This is kind of my first day back after being sick, unfortunately. But they're champs, they're wonderful. I'm back, about to be with them, and I'm truly honored. I'm blessed to work at one of the best schools and in the best districts.
I think she's the best, because she's always really kind, and she doesn't really care if we, like, get things wrong. All she wants is to learn this school year is how to be kind, and I think we're going to be able to do that.
Congratulations, Ms. Cummings.
On behalf of Dr. Moore, it's my pleasure to share with you and to publicly announce that you will be a finalist for Richland, too, Teacher of the Year. that you will be a finalist for Richland Two Teacher of the Year.
I want to say thank you to everyone here at Bookman. Everybody in this room and in the hallway has been supportive, and I could not have gotten here without everybody.
Congratulations.
Because I'm twice Teacher of the Year.
And a top five finalist.
Congratulations, Dr. Collins, for being named a finalist for District Teacher of the Year.
Thank you. My learners can tell you, I love doing what I do every single day. This is not about me, but about the staff here at Longleaf Middle School. We are committed to change the lives of our learners every single day. So thank you to all of my colleagues and my administrators. You know, we're in this together. It's really a pleasure. Just being here working doesn't feel like work to me. It really feels like, I'm just enjoying what I do. It feels good. It feels great.
Good morning, everyone.
Ms. Rona Stewart, you are one of our Teacher of the Year finalists. Congratulations.
Thank you so very much. It is an honor. I love what I do. I love my job. I love my babies. Everything that I do, I do for these guys. They are our future. They are going to be our future leaders, and it is important that they have teachers who pour into them and who love them every single day. And I hope my dad still has in my former babies. So it is an honor. Thank you so very much. I truly, truly appreciate it.
So a very special, congratulations to our Teacher of the Year finalists, Ms. Hannah Cummings from Round Top Elementary School, Yoko Hughes from Bookman Road Elementary School in her lab coat, Julie Russell, who is the orchestra teacher at Blythewood High School, and they serenaded me with our theme from Rocky, and Dr. Nicola Smiling from Longleaf Middle School, and Mrs. Rona Stewart from Spring Valley High School. We are so proud of our five finalists, and we know that they are going to do a great job on their interview. So congratulations. We also have another first in the history of Richland Two School District, but also in the history of NASCAR. So NASCAR is 76 years old, but for the first time in that history, an orchestra will perform before the race on Saturday, not in just any NASCAR race, but the grand race, Darlington. Yes. So more than 70 students from Blythewood High School will perform under the direction of District Teacher of the Year finalist, Julie Russell. We are very excited for those students. You can clap. Yes, you can. Also want to remind everyone, September is Attendance Awareness Month. Missed days and even minutes add up and can negatively impact a student's success. So students should attend school every day, all day. Parents, please help your students with this task and be on the lookout for a Parent Square message about Attendance Awareness Week. Also this week, I had the privilege to be a part of a group that spoke at City Hall to launch Be Smart Week for 2024. Richland Two is one of the founding districts that are members of the Be Smart community. So we want to encourage parents to talk to their students about keeping schools safe and not bringing weapons on campus. Also want to remind parents, please secure your weapons at all times. We have a holiday this weekend, and we know children get curious, and that is the time when children will step out and do something that we don't think that they will do. So please, secure your weapons. And also, go on the website, see what activities are for the week of Be Smart, and please participate in that. I also would like to congratulate our board members on their new boardmanship levels. That model of we go back to school and continue to grow is what we want to model for our students, so thank you for doing that. And with that, Madam Chair, I am done.
Thank you so much, Dr. Moore. I'd like to say congratulations to all of the District Teacher of the Year finalists. I think Dr. Moore just said it. Congratulations to all our board members who are going back, getting their professional development. And last week, we had an opportunity to have some of the greatest speakers and presenters to come and to train us at our retreat. And we all had to share one takeaway. So I'm not going to put my board members on the spot because they probably didn't bring their notes and didn't think about that, but homework board members, because it's the teacher in me. Please bring something next board meeting, just to share from the retreat, one takeaway if you choose to participate. We might be ready. Well, you know what? Go ahead. Ms. Nash, you know what? I'm going to start with you. Give us a takeaway, Ms. Nash, just one, because we're ready. You know, we stay ready. There you go.
So easy. Well, they did a whole presentation with lemonades, and they were talking about all the uses of lemonades. And so basically, always make, like, lemonade out of lemons and in how we impact our students, how we, taking everything that is put upon us, put upon our teachers and everything, and turning that into lemonade that we can drink. So anyway, it was really, really great, and thanks to Kyle Green for that. I will never forget it.
Well, thank you. You took mine, so I have to come up with another one. So, Ms. Porter, do you want to do this now? You know, we have options, or you can just defer until next meeting. See, Ms. Nash just raised the bar. She's raised the bar. That's what we're talking about, leadership.
The pressure is on, so I will have to narrow down something very quick, but I have thorough notes here. I really enjoyed Dr. Peters. So something that I'll share that sticks out to me is his chart of the then and now presentation. And that was then, knowledge, skill, and experience, and now being transparency, vulnerability, and relationships. I felt like that was an overall theme on that day. And in order for us to transform, we have to be great leaders, and it starts with building good relationships with each other so that we can work well together.
Thank you. Mr. Trapp?
Yeah, I'll read one sentence I wrote on one of the notes here. You can only give what you're full of.
There you go. Thank you, Mr. Trapp.
Hope I didn't take that to somebody else.
Ms. McFadden, I saw you ready. You had your notes out.
Humility is the new smart.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Washington?
The five Cs of a sustaining board. Culture, core values, commitment, community, and collaboration.
Mrs. Agostini, would you like to share or defer to the next meeting?
I'm going to defer because I came unprepared for this assignment, so I might be one of those students that gets written up on that student report. Because I had that question too. How do you get that? But so.
But, Ms. Agostini, you're not being defiant, and I gave you an opportunity, so you're still fine. You can still make that A. That's grace. We have given you some grace. Very good. Dr. Moore, since you were there, and Dr. Franklin, we're coming over to you too.
Got Ms. McFadden?
No, Ms...
Humility is the new smart.
Yes.
So Ms. Betty Parker reminded us with conflict management to first seek to understand before we respond, so.
Thank you. Dr. Franklin?
And my takeaway too was humility is the new smart.
And I think my takeaway would be, Dr. Peters talked about making sure that when you have an issue with someone, make sure you address it with that person. So make sure the mail goes to the correct address. So that was just phenomenal. So thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for taking part in that. And then I also want to say, congratulations to Tia Jones. Dr. Suber and I were assistant principals over at Rice Creek when Tia was our second grade teacher. And I can speak for both of us. We saw so much greatness in her. So it's not surprising that she's now in a leadership role, because we saw that when she was a second grade teacher. And it means so much when you have an opportunity to see them as teachers and then to watch them grow. And then, of course, I'm going to have to pick on Mr. Sims now that he's sitting over there, and he's kind of looking. He's like, oh, no. It's just to see Mr. Sims. I remember my first year as a teacher, Mr. Sims was a student. And to now see him in a district office role, where he's been a teacher, an assistant principal, now principal, in a district office level, and it would not surprise me if he becomes a superintendent in the next couple of years. I've already seen that. I'm speaking that over him, and he's ready to move on to that level. And it just does my heart good. And I always like to say, he was not one of my students because I was a home act teacher. So he was over in the other building, you know? They didn't really do home act too much. He was in the business side of the school. But it still does my heart warm just to see someone at that level. And I say that to say, that's why it's so important when we're working with students, because we don't know what the future holds for them. That's why we have to treat people with dignity and with respect, because life is a circle. It comes back around. And one thing I will tell you, as students, we don't forget how teachers treated us.
No, we don't.
We don't ever forget whether it's something great they did in our lives or something negative. So I would just end on that note. Thank you all for coming out. We really appreciate you guys coming. And I would still encourage everyone to share your thoughts, your visions, your reviews, and meet with us. We are a board that's open to hearing what you have to say and being able to make adjustments if we can and when we can, at the proper time. With that said, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Washington?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the August 27, 2024 board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington, seconded by Mrs. Nash. Board members? We would do a hand, okay? We want to do a hand vote. Those in favor, raise your hand, right hand. Seven in favor, zero no. The motion passes.